Eric, Cartwright.
Here. Mrs. Marcy and Renee Cook are excused. We now stand for the special.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, standing in the public space for the record, P D minutes dated on November fifth.
So.
What's my call?
Phil Housekey, supported by Cartwright, any discussion?
Would I get, I was zooming in and then got pulled out.
Jackson?
Yes.
In over.
Phil Housekey?
Yes.
R C D. Frederick?
Yes.
I'm Cartwright.
Yes. All right, medication in the car has public safety. Police.
No problem.
I appreciate it. I was having a deep conversation with Fire Chief about our academy experiences. Good morning or good afternoon, I'm sorry, I've been here since the morning. Uh, this is a report from the mental health department. I'm your handbogman assistant, Chief of Police. Um, next month, uh, we're trying to go on the first and second. We're gonna have an independent physical and procedural audit of the police department that's gonna include the evidence room. From our property control system. Uh, something done by the rock, uh, rock, rock solid group. That's required whenever there's a change in leadership, you have to check the property room. It's one of the first things that has to be done. After that audit, will we get a report from them? We'll get their report, we'll look at the best practices that they're suggesting that we go through, and we'll see what we can do, if we can't do it, make that happen. Um, we did get Lieutenant Roman and Detective Peeny, your property room manager class, on October twenty eighth of tonight. Um, so now we have two property managers, that's required as well. No one was surprised that we saw, we didn't have one. Uh, Corporal Dominguez will attend the class in the future. The Chief and I ran that class well, because we're so busy, we didn't leave the class. Because we got free credit, we'll turn it over to Corporal Dominguez, so he can go through the class. But we'll go through the class too at some point in the future. Even though we won't be managing the property room, we want to see what the rules are, what the laws are, in the actual property, uh, evidence room. We're, one of the things that we found pretty immediately was that we have power D M S. That's phenomenal program. Power D M S is the industry standard right now. What we saw when we tried to use it is that it hadn't been set up properly, and the policy was huge for it. So, in order to get power D M S up and running, we're gonna have someone brought in, on a solvent basis, or however we do it, to set power D M S up for us. It's too daunting of a chain, of a task for us to do ourselves, and we're working on doing that now. Next month, M Coles will be conducting a compliance audit. That's a big, M Coles is a licensing and regulatory body for the state of Michigan. And anytime they come into your building, there's gonna be a lot that needs to be done after. So that will be happening next month. P C I G is completing their investigation. They have one more employee that they have to interview throughout the country. Uh, once they finish that interview, they're gonna give that final report to you, and unfortunately, have our community as well. Kailo's Car Wash is now open, and our patrol cars are in the system, and we'll be washing our cars there. We had them using classic car wash in Allen Park. Uh, we talked to both of them, they're gonna be allowing us to wash their cars with either one for less than three dollars. So that's, that's a really good, uh, development. Um, MAP, they're the union that represents the police officers. They're gonna be having a meeting with their staff to address ways that they feel they can help us, and we'll be part of it. After which, we're gonna be meeting with the entire department, and they intend on doing it in the first week of December. Um, our Facebook page was taken down, we don't know what happened to it, but we're gonna be relaunching it, and it's gonna be professional and done properly. Um, we, after our scooter course that we had here, had to do it with the public safety and became a pretty interesting topic to talk about, which we talked about quite a bit. Um, we were able to give a target, Target's gonna be donating five hundred dollars, um, to buy homes. So, that money that we got from Target, somebody went to the school district, they're gonna be getting dollars for the young people that ride the electric scooters, and they're gonna be giving them out. So I thought, that's a big win for us. So we're gonna keep doing that, it won't be just Target, everyone's gonna get touched, and anything we can do to help, make this a safer experience for the riders. So us, that's where it's important. So, again, the police department, we're talking about education, we're not talking about enforcement, that's really not my right hand. Can you answer your question, what's your asking that's on? Um, next meeting, one of the requests we have is that the officers, dispatchers, and the rescue, uh, folks, all first responders that helped with the baby being born be recognized by the council, and even awarded. That was a big deal. Um, we're gonna be working on a new mental health program for the guidance center. Uh, it's a tablet that, that allows the police officer to hit the button, and they'll have a master level psychologist come on, and help deal with some of those issues that they can deal with. So I think that's awesome. Uh, I looked, saw a presentation last week, uh, the new tablets that they have out, it was pretty impressive. Lastly, um, at the next meeting, we're gonna talk about training. Uh, next year, we're gonna start really jumping into the training piece. That's where I come from, so that's where I'm gonna bring. They're gonna be trained on a pretty regular basis. We're gonna set up a training schedule for them. It's gonna start at the bottom, it's gonna go up to the chief, we're often be trained, we're, uh, not to the minimum standard that M Coles requires, we're gonna train up to the background, which is quite a good training. But we're talking about that next month. Any questions, Chief?
Any questions for the Chief? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, public, thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, following citizens and tenants, uh, don't want to lay an energy for you guys tonight, um, I've just been hearing from a lot of the, uh, citizens here that they've been using our smoke detector free program. And, uh, here they're pretty satisfied, so, anyone else, please call, so we can get those installed for you guys. Sorry about my voice, I had, uh, hung up that last time, so. Uh, other than that, do you have any?
Questions for the Chief? All right, thank you so much. All right, public work someone, or Frederick? All right. Chief willing official?
Good evening, Mayor. How was it? So, as the state, our planning commission met regarding a site plan approved for two-two-one-five Shaker, so I'm here to make for a motion to accept Planning Commission number P C two-five dash thirty-five. On the site plan, P C twenty-five dash thirty-five, to approve the site plan review for two-two-one-five Shaker, and three gas pump decision, dispenser to existing property, pending all departments. So.
Support.
Moved by Jackson, supported by Phil Housekey, any discussion?
To the chair.
Yep, before I tie this on for trial.
Um, how does this, reading their proposal, or their proposed use of the property, is looking like they want a convenience store with gas pumps, so, and a restaurant? How does that fall into our master plan for the city? And how does a convenience store fall into our plan of no more party stores?
Great question, so, little background, this building, if you don't know, this is on the corner of Hopewood and Shaker. Used to be a former Swanson restaurant, it's been closed for fifteen, twenty years. So it was always a restaurant, so what they're really proposing, it's called an convenience store, but it's really more of a small gas station corner in the building, and that's where they're going to need to pay, and then from there, you'll be able to walk through the doors into a restaurant slash possibly carry out, they're not quite sure what that's going to be yet, right? They're looking for proposals and what they're gonna do. They're thinking about doing the eastern food there, but that still is up for, that still is up for, um, question, and we say, what they decided they wanna put in there. So, it does fit in our master plan under C two. Um, we did do a lot of research on these gas pumps. According to our stuff, it has to be, you know, four hundred feet from the police station, and fire station, any public park. Any place that has a group or gathering of more than twenty-five people or more, um, you know, it's not a transit center, it's kind of a empty corner. I think the bright side is, the other side's pretty dark, and they're talking about hours of this gas station only being twenty-four. It'll bring some light under that corner, maybe light that area up, it's pretty deserted down there. But that's, these are some of the questions that the planning commission brought up, which are doing what they, which are talking about. Um, so it does fit into our plan, you know, for that. A new gas station in our town would have to be up there with Dixon, up the road there, which is almost four miles away. So, he's talking about three pumps, he's not talking about a major, uh, gas station. And he's having some, proposing some E V chargers in there as well, so that's our question.
How big is this convenience store? I'm worried about business being taken away from existing businesses when we've already put something in place to stop additional force.
I don't know if it looks like it, uh, I don't think it looks like it's about twelve hundred square feet, twelve to fifteen hundred square feet.
It's more like seven hundred.
So pretty small, like a regular gas station.
No, come on.
You see it's about closer to seven, if you want to.
Like a small?
It's a smaller.
Like a regular gas station?
It's a smaller type of gas station.
Okay.
But this is focused more on the restaurant than a convenience store, so. But we put in the gas there, we're not planning on opening a whole convenience store. It's more like, uh, gas at a restaurant, and maybe a couple, pretty for the water and Pepsi, that's it.
Okay, I'm, I'm just worried about, you know.
Uh, space wise, I think it's around seven hundreds, it's under eight hundreds square feet, that's for sure.
Okay, so quite, quite small, just a, you know.
They just deserve the purpose why they're here. That's pretty much right. It's not gonna be like that massive convenience store.
Okay.
This gentleman, I'd like, um, if you know the total awareness, please, the, on the total awareness. But just down in this job, if you look at that, it's totally.
That's all my thoughts, thank you. All right, rolling for a motion to approve the site plan, decided by, or approved by, oh, you're right, okay. Um, any other questions? Seeing none, all vote.
Jackson?
Yes.
Phil Housekey?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Cartwright?
Yes.
All right, thanks.
All right. Any questions? Uh, City Commissioner, Finance Director.
All right, good evening, I will keep this moving. Uh, I'd like to thank Robert Cannelli for his service to the city, he, uh, presented at the last, uh, public safety meeting. So I am requesting a motion to pay out to Robert Cannelli in a grand total of thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred, twenty-four dollars, forty-two cents. This is contractual, it has vacation time, unused, personal, sick, et cetera. And then there's other allocations, uh, for the gun allowance, the technical girl pay, longevity uniform, et cetera, so. Is that, oh, should he, he's gonna take the checks like most have, uh, just continue on the payroll even though you're not, uh, working. We don't make a lump sum payment, the last payment date should be February twenty, twenty-sixth. And just move.
Support.
Moved by Jackson, supported by Phil Housekey. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote.
Jackson?
Yes.
Phil Housekey?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Cartwright?
Yes.
All right.
I think the chair, at the last minute, did they accept this resignation?
Public Safety did.
Is this by the wish to do that?
Oh, here, yeah. I guess I request a motion to receive and place on file, uh, public safety, um, resignation letter due to last meeting. Um, was that the, uh? Well, we could go on that, it's not the, no, the date, days about.
Fourth?
Eleven.
Eleven? Eleven.
So.
Support. Um, moved by Frederick, supported by Cartwright. All of vote, please.
Jackson?
Yes.
Phil Housekey?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Cartwright?
Yes.
All right, all right, Operation Council?
I have nothing on the agenda, but I do have a concern, um, we, the city council, okay, we, the city council adopted the emergency manager for the Dearborn Fire Department. Um, I just want to point out to this body that, that pursuant to our contract with City of Dearborn, they are to handle the emergency manager services, and coordination of that. Uh, the mayor would oversee that and direct when there is an emergency. I could, I was not privy, you know, to send out regarding that, because he sent it to the Dearborn Fire Department, but.
Good, um.
So we need to.
Wayne County will be here next meeting to address that, I don't feel like all of the information was provided. And if you read Public Act, uh, three ninety, uh, there was a lot of that that was left out. So I want this body to be completely informed before they make a decision, on something that, it, it, um, I think would be a hindrance for residents, uh, going through Dearborn as opposed to Wayne County and the state. So he'll be here next meeting to address this, um.
Okay.
There was a lot of information left out, so that will be on the agenda, the guy that's coming, um, is from Homeland Security, and, um, I had a lengthy conversation with him after the last meeting, I wanted him to be here. So this meeting, unfortunately, he has something, uh, conflicting, uh,
Budget.
Something in his schedule, so we said he'll be here at the next meeting.
Uh, okay, but I just want to point out, the duty and responsibilities pursuant to the charter of the mayor is to enforce the resolutions of the city council, and to enforce the charter.
Correct.
So based upon that, there is a duly passed resolution, and not only that, we have a contract that we assign.
Completely understand that, I'm just concerned how that's gonna take place. And we'll discuss it at the next meeting. We'll discuss it at the next meeting. Your end, Chief. Point of order, yeah, point of order.
You, no, you should have detailed this, if you wanted to do that, and you did not.
I will not sign this.
So you, it needs to be signed.
I will not sign this.
We both, you know, you need to sign it.
It will be addressed next council meeting with Wayne County.
I'm, I'm comfortable, let's, let's address it, but there's a contract that we signed in the bound by, and there's a resolution, so the economy is, the problem with this whole thing is that, uh, we're creating a mess here, and I'm just concerned about that, so I'm pointing it out.
Yeah, it's just gonna be a rub in the rough, because after talking with Wayne County, they said, why? So, the state will give money to the county before they'll give to a city. So, why would we have a third party hand our emergency ser- management service? We have to call Dearborn to call the state or the county when we could just call them ourselves. It's normally our police chief or our fire chief, and, like I said, it'll be addressed at the next meeting, because there was a lot of information left out about Public Act three ninety, that this body wasn't made aware of, and I think that it's gonna be a hindrance to our residents.
Through the chair, uh, that's, what I'm gonna spend there, that's not your decision make, you, you.
Did I? Do you have the floor?
You posted.
Do you have the floor? No, I said we'll address it at the next meeting.
That could be, I'm not trying to cause conflict here, but I'm concerned about the breach contract, and I don't concern about.
We haven't signed a contract, so there is no contract.
You have. No, no.
We have a resolution.
No, the contract I referred to is the Fire Department, the City of Dearborn, Dr. twelve. And that's, that's a paragraph within the contract, I can provide you a copy if you'd like, but.
Please, let's do it.
It's on page three, it says scope of converting, so, I'm pointing it out.
That's our contract with the City of Dearborn?
Correct.
Can I see that for a second?
So, it's, it says scope of page three. I have it right there.
Okay, we will discuss it at the next meeting.
Okay, certainly, then, there's one other question I could get, I'm just, sort of, wait, no, we have been getting, like, done in letters from, is it Waxfritz?
Yeah.
Yeah. The city has a Wax contract, that's been approved and it's been in place.
Are these on the agenda?
No, under Corporation Council.
They are, there's nothing on your force of.
Under Corporation Council, what I'm concerned about is this, Mayor, we have the Wax contract in place, we've had the Wax contract for, for a long time. Um, so Wax owns Enterprise, and so Enterprise, under its own volition, sent a, um, some, a number of credit cards to the police department. If you don't need those, we didn't authorize them, there's no contract, I've never reviewed a contract, by charter, I'm required to review all contracts. So I'm concerned, they're, they're gonna file, uh, a loss collection action against the city. There is no contract, but I've seen that's been signed, uh, under charter, I'm required to review all contracts, so I'm concerned.
Did you read over the Enterprise contract?
This is, that, this is, it's not the company, there's, they're holding on to the city, we have kind of a.
With Wax, correct.
With Enterprise, to buy cards, or lease cards, just to be more specific. And then, um, we don't, we have the Wax contract already, but somehow Wax sent additional cards, and now they're trying to be collecting from the city. I just don't know, there's no authorization contract, I don't have any documentation on it, that you have.
Well, I didn't authorize anything from Wax.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not seeing that, I'm just concerned that.
I know, it's been an ongoing battle, uh, Nick was handling this prior to, prior to him leaving, um, clearly he didn't. Um, I have no authority to code what they already did use from those cards, um, but they did use, in fact, use it for gas, um, I did look over the bill, they did take off the card fees and the other fees, so we are strictly paying for the gas that was used on those cards, um.
Okay, under, under the law, just to point out to both Mayor and Council, is that the city cannot be responsible absent a signed contract. Any corporation deals with municipality, our rules and regulations are posted online. You can't just send credit cards and say, okay, go ahead and charge them, there's gotta be a contract, it's gotta be signed and authorized. And that's about taking place, and I've asked them to provide that, and they refuse to do that. I'm pointing out to this body that they may be suing us for collections on, on these ones for gas, that I don't have any documentation that ever existed. So I'm just pointing it out.
I did sign the Enterprise contract, um, what they did from there, I'm not really sure. Um, and I know that, uh, police officers didn't use those cards, cards for gas, for our vehicles. Um, I know, I've seen the, I've seen the bills, me and, uh, Deputy Chief Martinez went over this, um, pretty in depth, and I know that I've talked to Rich several times about this, and, um, I'm not really sure how to proceed forward with this. Do we make, do they sue us, or do you reach out to them and?
Well, it's, it's clear they can't, or they collect them, we don't have this contract, so you, you can't sue us on a contract, you never accepted it, and never approved, and and so I'm just kinda concerned where this came from. I asked them to provide a copy of the contract, and they just said, I'm not authorized to take a look at that information. Well, I'm sorry, City Attorney, we're not gonna pay a bill unless they can show us a signed contract, and who authorized it? So, I'm just pointing out to this body, everybody needs to be aware of that, that may be some litigation coming up.
Does the floor recognize Scott Frederick?
First of all, how much do we got?
I, it's only, it looks like twenty-five hundred dollars in, in gas fees, a number of credit cards.
Can we, uh, reach out to them and see if they, we already have an existing contract, right? And this is just some additional cards that weren't part of the, can't, they just merge them?
They, they did not merge them, it's a separate account, so it's a separate contract. And they said they have one, but they won't provide me documentation, it seems kinda odd. So, my, my advice is, we're having to pay this, we'll go until they give some documentation, and we signed an agreement, that, that, I mean, we're happy. I'm not, we have, no, you're good.
Now, the floor recognizes Sam Phil Housekey.
So with this issue, we have two different accounts, why would we not take all the newest credit cards that they sent us, collect them, and not use them?
They are collected, they're not.
They, they have been collected, when we found out that they were, we didn't know that this could happen.
Okay.
So, oh, okay, I'm just pointing it out. That's all I have, thank you.
All right. Um, I need a motion to receive and place on file the Treasurer's Report for October.
So who?
Supporter. All vote, please.
Who moved it?
Uh, Phil Housekey, and then Cartwright, supported by.
Uh, Jackson?
Yes.
Phil Housekey?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Cartwright?
Yes.
All right, at this time, it's audience participation, if you come forward, please take your mental evidence for the record. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Oh, I love.
No, we don't, no. All right, it's audience participation, if they want to come forward.
I thought you just pointed out.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, my name is Robert Phil Housekey, a Southgate resident, and I'm also a transit advocate and bus driver, and I serve on the Smart Riser Council, and I was oversight over our smart bus system, and I'm a council member at Flour, serving all three counties, including Wayne. Today, I'd like to address the majority of the problem when it comes to public transit. The city of Melvindale has been neglected for almost a decade and a half, with no public transit or accessible public transit in this city for years. I have found multiple residents that I know in these southern communities, or some couple people I know that actually live in Melvindale, that want access to transit here in this city. In a while, we have two bus routes. One is provided by Smart, which is on the outer side near Allen Park, one forty South Shore, and we have one bus route that cuts through in Melvindale, goes into Dearborn, divided by transportation, which is the forty-one Shaker. Those two bus routes alone run every hour, and with the paratransit and also microtransit that we have in the city, it's not enough. And for our seniors and people with disabilities that need access to frequent transportation that only costs two dollars fifty cents per fare, not everyone has access to a smart home. And one of the responsibilities I have in my committees is making sure to oversight over board our agency, but also providing feedback and transportation opportunities to the communities that we serve. I personally, after a decade and a half seeing transit not just cut almost a decade and a half ago, we still have not seen change in the city to provide transit. I would like to see the city of Melvindale be able to have those conversations with Smart, and I would be happy to facilitate those, but over time, there are people in this community that have need access to jobs, they need access to school, they need access to be able to have the freedom to get around in their community, whether that's the senior center, or going through pharmacy, or going through down, right here, down off the corner, in downtown. There's tons of opportunities, and the lack of transportation as is, provides a huge. So, I'd be happy to place a lot of contact information, to look into the agency itself, connect you guys, to figure out how we can solve this problem, because at the same time, this is about the quality of life of residents.
So, I don't know, we are, um, part of Smart Flex.
Yes.
So, um, if people need a ride, uh, they, it's a feasible, um, I believe it's two dollars transportation to wherever you need to go, they come and pick you up in, um, like a small transit, um, and take you. Um, but as far as like the bus system, we haven't had the buses, some running through Melvindale in a long time.
Yes, that's almost back, uh, when they had the cuts in the financial situation, I mean, years ago. Smart Flex is one of the newest services that was provided under the former leadership and kicked down W, uh, President Tiffany, uh, Dunker. And she's been in charge of making sure that service remains efficient and reliable in the city of Melvindale for years, and the stuff that takes care of it. It's actually two eighty dollars, depending on where you go, and it serves Dearborn all the way down to the tail end of Taylor, near Southland Center. But the issue I have, and I've discussed this multiple times with the agency itself, is that not everyone has access to a smart home. There is a number you can call, but at the same time, it's a private contractor, and I have concerns with the private contractor as is, as they've been not frequently reliable in terms of providing updates to us. And when it comes to fixed route service, that's something that hasn't been served here in the city for the longest time. And with the two bus routes, the one that goes into the city and the other one that serves on the hour point, not everyone here lives there, and they live within the enterprise of the city. So I understand the, the boundaries of microtransit, some people don't know how to use it, so we're trying to be more accommodations and accessible to those folks as well.
Would you want to come back and do a presentation at our next council meeting?
I would be happy to, so I work for the agency, I'm on their council, so I'm volunteers, I'm appointed. So I'm happy to connect you guys to the people over at Smart, that do control flags and all of the fixed route, and they'd be happy to get a presentation.
Awesome, if you need information, I'd definitely reach out to them.
Of course, absolutely, thank you for your time, boss.
You're welcome.
I was waiting to talk. Two quick questions, following up from another resident's comment on the audience participation from a couple weeks ago. You just did the Treasurer's Report, who's creating that Treasurer's Report?
The staff in the Treasury Department.
Okay, so what is the situation in, with our current Treasurer, we haven't seen him, what, six months, maybe?
No, it's not been that long, he's been out of the country for, I think, a month and a half.
Yeah, I, I, I could be wrong, but I don't remember that seat being filled for months. And anyway, what, you were going to look into it?
Right, I did.
With this, uh, city clerk?
Correct, I did.
Can you share anything with us?
Um, we've done, we have sent seven, um, meetings, uh, this year, and, um, we were looking at what the charter says as far as how many meetings you can make. And, yeah, I think I'm well checked out.
Well, are we getting that properly taken care of for this city for legal reasons? That's what I'm concerned about. There, we don't have a Treasurer that's. That's what I'm concerned about. We don't have a treasurer that's here taking care of business. We have a staff. I think it's a legitimate resident question.
Absolutely. Do you think that way, legally?
I would have to look at one of the charter that says it's a part of that, but there are competent staff within the office. In fact, there's no treasurer overseeing that. I can understand why you're concerned.
But is there pay involved with this position?
There is.
So.
I don't know what is.
What's the status on that? I'm just wondering for the physical responsibility of the city.
So he's still currently employed by the same.
Right. But is he working?
Huh?
Is he working?
No, he's out of the country right now.
So he shouldn't even pay.
Well, it's salary. So you're paid.
But it could be F M L A or something where you don't get paid, right?
It's not though. He just has a hundred at the moment.
If, if.
Sure.
The elected officials do not get paid legally. They're just getting annual salary. So these people that sit up here are just getting an annual salary and he's. So there is no.
But he's a city employee, right? Or no?
He's elected.
No, he's elected. He's elected. He's a duly elected person. At the last election. And so there are no benefits, including the vacation. They just get an annual salary compensation or stipend.
So a city council person can miss a lot of time and there's no, there are no.
There are, there are parameters within the chart to say how many they can miss before they leave.
Okay. I'm not against anybody on this whole.
Trust me, I looked into it. I was a little concerned myself.
Right. And I think a responsible city council would be concerned as well. And then the second question is, I'm just gonna bring it up repeatedly, and I would like to note that anyone on the city council has this concern as well. I brought up last time. The communication challenges of this city, I believe. And how our website still doesn't have a council person on. Has Linda Land on? Has Joe Biden listed on the website? Still today. And I'm wondering, can we, is this an issue for anybody or is it just me? Like, we don't have, it's not being actively updated. Like commission meetings, everything. And again, as I brought up, I've done some initial research, but this is the legal council's area. Like, I don't think Facebook can be a legal posting option for the city.
The city's maintained to be updated. It should be updated.
But last time we were here, your partner said he was going to look into it.
No, we have to maintain the one page. That's be updated.
Okay. And that is a feed to social media, correct? That's the research that I found.
The feed to social media. I'm not, I'm not following it.
Of course, you can have social media feeds, but the, like announcements for the city need to be on the website. And that can be.
Simulate.
Yeah, that's my. And I don't see that happening. And is it a concern of any one of the council people that that's not happening?
Well, absolutely.
Okay. Can we put this, if it is, and I'm not assuming it is, I think it should be actively on the agenda instead of, oh, we're gonna look into it. Is that possible? Do you have to make, I know you can't make a, a motion now, but can it be made during the individual city council members discussion? If it is the priority.
If somebody wants to make their motion, of course.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Who will be in charge of it? Good job.
We, we don't think we have a person in charge. It is, they have access.
That's where after.
So audience participation, if anybody wants to come forward.
Hi, everyone. I'm Emily Hartson-Bride. And for some reason, we're not on the agenda. Can you guys explain why? We do not have a, what do you call it, a manager or. And on our web page, we have a person on it. It says right under Parks and Rec. I'm playing off of him because it's been bothering me to invite all of our supervisor or chair, the building department. So all of the communication, all of Parks and Rec is going to her. I would like her email to be added to it. So we're kind of passive and sometimes some communications are not getting to us. Like, we found out at the last minute that the heat club on the common mentioned help with, with cash now handing for our trumpetry. And, and then I'm speaking, I'm not speaking to everybody, but I wrote a proposal that I asked to be put on this agenda. I mean, I spent hours on it and then it's been approved. We've been working on it for weeks. And I kinda would like it to be added each next time. I know you guys can't vote on it now, but this took a lot of work and I mean, it's not really on the agenda. So is there a way, since there's no, I mean, we're actually the Parks and Rec director, the owner and team. Is there a way that we can be put on the agenda so we don't have to wait to participation before we can come up here and speak?
So it's, it's on the agenda under number ten. It's the commissioner liaison, which it would be up to your commissioner liaison, which is Celine, to bring forth any information.
Okay. He's not, he's on vacation too.
Right.
But even, like I said, we have been working pretty hard on this. And if, I mean, if you don't vote positive on it, we don't want, I mean. Right now, I'll say I have at least myself, at least thirty hours of investment on it. And then we can make the databases for people to fill out and everything. So I mean, this is, this is a big endeavor and we didn't make the, you know, the agenda today. And I asked, you know, so how did we handle this? Because I would really like to see it. And us not to, if we're not gonna be able to get approval, then we wanna move on to something else. So I mean, we're wasting time there, you know? And then there's another issue that I've been feeling like really difficult with is I'm a resident volunteering my time and it doesn't feel like we're, like the communication like he's talking about. I mean, we have a Parks and Rec room that used to be the, the senior room. And I mean, there's old time stuff stored in there and spider webs, but that's not the problem. The problem is I feel like every single time that we're trying to get this room, we kind of got a vague to get the room. So I mean, is that our room to use? Do we have to be asking to use this room? How are we gonna proceed with this? Because I don't think we should have to do that personally. You know, if that's Parks and Rec and we're gonna use the room, what is the issue? That's the other thing. And then another thing that I've been, I'm speaking like entirely for myself. We, I called the city over there and I talked to his, the manager there. And my friend's been on Parks and Rec for twenty-eight years. And she told me there's no reason why we can't go online. And to be honest, our school system, we have a computer program at the school and my son's in steam also. They volunteered to make up a program totally for free, write the, the program and everything so we can be online. And nobody's gonna come in here between eight and four-thirty to pay. Everyone works. People don't even get home till five-thirty. And I'm talking about even my husband, he leaves at, at six or at four-thirty, five o'clock. He's at four, like six. So I mean, what can we do to get this program going? Because I feel like we're banging our head. And then they're telling us they have to come to here and pay and our vendors have to, can't pay, you know, they can't accept a payment and they pay us. Why can't we make the contract saying, you know, they're agreed to pay us ten dollars per person and then they're gonna pay us day of? Why, why is this so hard? I mean, that's the problem. I mean, I'm seeing this as a big problem. I mean, if you guys want to park the rec program, we need to be worked with. And right now, we're not being worked with. It's, it's been very, very difficult. And I feel like we're banging our head because, you know, we're begging, we're begging for this room. We're begging to go online. It's like, I mean, it's, it's been very difficult and I get frustrated. I, I kept quiet this long, but I'm not gonna be quiet. So I mean, what can we do to get this program helping going and bring it back to some kind of glory, you know? I mean, it's a lot of work to bring a program back that's been gone since twenty eighteen. So, and I mean, I think if someone puts me in a position to do something, I've worked real hard on it. So, and like I said, this, this, we took this seriously. We had a, a workshop. We did everything we could to get this going. So I mean, what can we do with the communication process here? How, I wanted to know from you guys, do we have to ask every single time to use the, our, our some rec room?
What's happening in the past five hours of.
Yeah, I forgot. Okay.
And what happens is that you contact the facility, say we need a, your meeting room for this night. And so they have to have staff over there to open up, make sure you guys, but they didn't get the meeting done. So that's all things take place. If it's available, and it seems to be, because it's your room, it shouldn't be a problem as long as they're open and have the ability to do that. So you just need to put the staff on notice and probably contact Renee. Just let her know we have a meeting scheduled for this night.
But she only answers the phone for certain people, not other certain people in their group either. I'm not even going to that.
Well, the staff there.
Okay.
So you don't necessarily have to talk with her.
Okay.
Assuming there's staff every time there's soccer events, right? We're open quite a bit for that. You can go in, talk to staff, say that we're here, represent the, we have a meeting scheduled for this. They'll put it in a book that says, you know, the meeting room or whatever. It's a secret room or.
Like it's a, it's a struggle. That's what I'm trying to explain. It's a struggle.
Well, it's not that it's a struggle because I ran into this for a decade or more than that, fifteen years. Then what you have is a book that says this meeting room is used by these people who are trying to fill it out. And they know they're made available and they, they're waiting for you guys to get there. Whether there's a meeting room in there now, they're doing the book and all. So the staff members there, either one, any one of them should be able to say, okay, we'll schedule that room for you. Like, they're signed up. There's a date.
Then we can move on to the second part of the problem. We have our hundred year, as you all know, okay? They decided to pave the driveway a couple days before we had this one hundred year. The city took a loss on a tenant of like six hundred dollars and you guys had to ditch out more money for this event. I mean, if they know this is on the books and it's been there since like January, February, why was cement scheduled at the same time? I mean, it doesn't make sense. That's what I'm saying. And then the other issue is, and then we had our trunk retreat, but it fits, okay? Well, the same thing happened. She scheduled a room right at the same time that we were supposed to be on the outside having trunk retreat. So you're talking about this book, right? Shouldn't our help be in it too? I mean.
You make sure you put it in there now?
Right. That's, yeah, but it's not us maintaining it. So I mean, this is two times this year.
Time's up, but if you have a comment. I pulled all of your meeting minutes for the entire year. You did not vote to have trunk retreat on that night. You did not have a resolution. You didn't have a resolution. It was not voted on. It was not in any of your meeting minutes. There was one comment made under discussions in March that said tentative date for trunk or treat. October twenty-fourth. That's it. There was no other discussion regarding trunk or treat the entire year. I pulled all of the meeting minutes and looked. I read them all. It wasn't there.
We'll be better at working it out. And then I will contact the field house director and let her know that it's your guys' room. And you should have your own schedule to be able to hold your events there.
Thank you.
Floor recognizes Joe Jackson.
I, I didn't, I wasn't aware that that was a Parks and Rec's room. I thought that was for the dancing.
So it's labeled on the outside of the building. If you look over at the awning, it says Parks and Rec and then Senior Center.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just saying, I thought it was for the dancing.
Despite coming in here and paying, we can't get a program.
We will work something out. We'll have to figure that out.
Okay. And that's why, and I mean, do you want to give us just one of you guys that's on the agenda for next week?
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Anybody else?
Good evening. I know I'm a little. Sorry, I have a lot of breath. I'm gonna pull where we voted on it on March seventeenth for the trunk or treat. But anyways, let's start off with.
Catch your breath first. Let you fill it off.
About to go, man, I was just talking. I was hoping we'd be out of here early. But after that, like, I was like, we have a meeting scheduled over. So a lot of our parks and markets up is coming up and I asked them if we could do it after Thanksgiving, correct? So we have a meeting set up. So we can go over a lot of this stuff. So we're parks and markets. And then, and like Renee, I think, I don't really have a problem. Someone had to tell you March to text her because she's younger and faster texting when we're meeting. But, yeah, so, so that, I'm gonna say, yes, Diana's working her butt off on this, the trunk or treat. I mean, that's. Farmers market. Farmers market. But, let's see. But anyway, so this Saturday, tree lighting. And thank you to ACDC for making me copies. Thank you for DPW for getting everything all set up for us. Thank you to the fire department, chief over here helping to get that all set up and taken care of. What else? Let me see. Oh, and then also, let's see, is it? So there's a tricky handout. Tuesday, the twenty-second, Melvindale residents only, ID required, one for a household, assumed at the Melvindale Islamic Center at one, seven, five, seven, five, six. Huh? The twenty fifth, the twenty second. Oh, sorry. I'm on a break. So, yeah, so that is from five-thirty to six-thirty. I don't know. I'm stalling time here because it's in here. Where we did, we made the motion on March seventeen for trunk or treat. And we also did it for, what else was it? The tree lighting too, wasn't it? The message today of the tree lighting. So I just wanna say, we did, and it was voted on, on March seventeen. So I'm gonna, my whole five minutes looking for this. Because I have it, but as you see, I do like twenty thousand things. And sadly, I have a cold up too. Oh, but here, you guys wanna look at this? Write it down. Pass it around.
I'm just really not sure why we're trying to work against a mission that's volunteering for the city.
Thank you.
Doesn't make any sense to me.
Right. Well, it's just a point. It is in here and if I have to, I'll find it as soon as I sit down. But it was, we did it on March seventeen because it was Ann Patrick's Day and we were all in here. Everybody else is having a good old time. We're trying to think of stuff to do for the city. So, but it is, it was March seventeen because the reason why I had it was when somebody said like, like, so rumors running around town is before, was like, we just picked a day of the air for trunk or treat. Which it was March seventeen. So if I can't find it, as soon as I sit down, if anybody else is gonna talk, then they can bring this up.
I'll post your flyer on the board on the hallway.
No, because it was. And like I said, I shouldn't have ran through my car. So.
You don't want me to post your flyer?
My flyer? Which flyer?
For the church.
Oh. Okay. I thought, I'm talking about this. We should post this up too when I find it. Because it's just like, yeah, like, we're not, we're just trying to do good stuff for the city.
And I think you guys are doing a great job.
I've been working good with Rich. Rich has been, Larry, you've been helpful. You give us advice. My dad would like it, but it's good advice. Renee's been helpful, you know? And Renee, I hope there's not somebody else too. So there's gonna be a little surprise. I can't say, but at the tree lighting, there's gonna be a little surprise. Oh, and the DTE session will be there too. Does anybody else need a thing? A flyer? But it is, we did make that a little sense with all the other ones. And I know I put it somewhere because I had it right here, but I was trying to be a nice person and not talk people out because they were lying. But it was, and if I have to, I will go get it from Amber tomorrow. And it was on, you wanna bet on this, we could bet. I will bet it. It's not...
We're following rules.
Through the charlie in my car. So, I do have it, it was on March seventeen.
All right, thank you. And I think everybody looks nice. And I hope everybody has a happy birthday, even you, Dawn.
Don't choke out them neck bones.
Can you worry, Abby? I didn't agree with you.
I wasn't, didn't really have anything to talk about, but I just kinda wanted to touch base on what Dawn was getting at on, you know, the time of the motion. I have for grace for Parks and Rec. We came in, ultimately, leaving the person who was leading us, and then to having no forum. It was three stooges running point for months, some end, trying to plan on the theater anniversary, on top of trying to get people to get an actual forum. So I just ask for grace, Dawn, if you don't mind. I, I know that even if there was something best, it's not done intentionally, it's done out of ignorance, and honestly, just the craziness of this past year and the hundredth anniversary, ever trying to plan with just three people at the time. So I just ask for grace, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
First question is, how many times in a council man has he asked an TEE for a year? He said there was a limit on it.
There is, I, I'm not gonna quote it out looking, I don't have that picture in front of me, but I have it right in the next video.
Okay, because, uh, obviously, let's say a council meeting's making six thousand dollars, and every five weekly, that's two hundred fifty dollars every two weeks. Now, if we don't know what that quota is for their missing days, you can see there's two missing here, and how many times has he been missing, and you're the treasurer, and you're supposed to do that stuff instead? You know, you got people working for you over there, but, you know, uh, he's had a token job or something that you don't really have to be president, because even though he's out of country, it's the chair still, like I said, that kind. So, uh, you know, it's, it's not representation for the people who are paying him something. I don't know what, I don't remember what his salary is, I have paid work at home, you know? I was being frivolous with our money. Uh, your job is to protect our money and, uh, have accountability for everything you guys vote on. You know what I mean? Every thing you pass, you should know what is being spent on. We're talking about credit cards, twenty-five hundred dollars, that all of a sudden popped up, and they're good for gas, and if there's no contract, obviously, there should be a contract. And then we're talking about, even that, uh, when, when we did that thing for the security of the fence, when you guys took down that lawyer that Jackson referred to. One person, police name, said something about five thousand dollars for that screen. And you guys spent five thousand dollars on this screen? Was that correct? It was five thousand dollars for that mesh that was around the fence?
That wasn't the guy.
Uh, that was the other guy, but anyways.
That's correct, it was five thousand.
Five thousand dollars, you guys didn't look at the contract, that's a lot of money, man, five thousand dollars, and then we took it down. That's very wasteful for the taxpayers, and we don't need that crap. When you guys do your voting, if you don't know exactly what's on the agenda, just say, hey, let's pass it on, because I'm ignorant, and I wanna know what the money's being spent on. But five thousand dollars for something we just took off? I think that was probably a security thing, because you look at where the police is, they're encased, and it protects them and stuff, and it gives them like privacy, because, you know, you got sick people out there, snipers will come out and shoot somebody that they don't like, because that's a possibility with the society as it is now. So they say, oh, there's that cop, that, that guy, I'm gonna shoot him. And then they shoot him, because they can see him, he was wide open, come get me on a target. But if we had that, that fence up, that would have protected him some way, because you didn't know who was back there to shoot. You know, you gotta think negative on some of these weirdos out there about trying to kill our police officers, psychos. They're all out there, man, you know? That's why I see the fences up there. But the point is, we've spent five thousand dollars on it, on something that does not exist no more. Hell, you could've called me, I would've been a citizen, I would've put the damn thing up, and I would've just, you know, it wouldn't cost no money, five thousand dollars. Jesus Christ, that's, that's astronomical. And then we got something about, uh, that police car that we had to shoot or something, where we got it from, we picked it up, and they have some kind of thing with the FBI doing an investigation, because it was overpriced, because it was a salvage car, and that was too outdated, and then some guy on Michigan Avenue that puts the cars together said, hey, this is wrong. Why did, how did they pay ninety thousand or whatever it was for? And that was kind of frivolous too, because they got a claim, hey, we're, we know what we're doing, and then you pass it on, we buy this car for the police chief or whatever it was, and, and it's overpriced. It was overpriced is what I'm hearing, that the FBI was doing an investigation on, you know? And then when we need to check some balances, we got this conclusion over here that is stating that there's a problem with the contract, and obviously, he's getting paid to, to do that, and he's looking out for it, and, and you should say, hey, if that's a right play, let's see, why is that not? Or the policemen, the recruits that got, got those, we had a meeting that went foul, we never saw why they spend so much on their uniforms and stuff, and overspent, and bought stuff they didn't have to buy, the ordinances and the police officers, because, because, uh, you know, uh, somebody gave them a free-for-all with their credit to go out there and buy whatever they wanted without somebody saying, this is what you're supposed to give. And they went out to spend extra money, and we supposedly had that meeting, the, the work, work thing, but it never materialized, because we got so defensive, and everybody was yelling so much, we, we left.
Okay, that's your time.
You know, you guys...
That's your time, thank you.
But, you know, you guys were causing problems, you're a custom yourself. Spend that money wisely.
Point of order.
There's one way to do it.
Evening.
It's been a while.
It is.
Name's Andrew Verhella. I'm just coming up here, you all know, not to certify, not to do all honey, but I actually wanted to do the opposite and say how amazing the last couple meetings have been. Everybody's been working together, it's a good thing to see. Don't know what happened, but, you know, from the outside looking in, a lot of people don't see us, I haven't seen really many times. Outside of giving you guys praise though, I don't know how many of you watch the news, but over the weekend, I wanna say, I bless you for the job that you did. Dear Warren had a very, very big issue over there. Something that I don't wanna see here, we're right next to Dear Warren. We're very critical in our staffing roles for the department, am I right? I do know that there have been certain agencies deployed to other cities, and I wanna know if this council is behind them, and if our public safety is also behind the agencies that have been deployed around the United States. National Guard, ICE, different, like I said, agencies. You know I'm a stickler for public safety? You guys have seen me come up here time and time again fighting for the officers. But now that these resources are being deployed, I wanted to ask the council how everybody feels here. I know that some of you served in the armed forces. I know that it's a very touchy subject to a lot of different people about who the agencies being deployed in cities. But I wanna know if we're going to take and do our due diligence to welcome them, and to help them with our department, do their job.
Chief, how do you think so? Will you work with any outside agencies that say you needed to come into our city?
Well, you know, ma'am. In our code of ethics, every police officer is taught in the academy, has to memorize and remember again, to talk about our assistance to any law enforcement, BBC, in the country. So if anyone calls for help, they're gonna receive help to the best of our ability. If, I don't know who you're referring to, but if they come in and say, hey, we need you to do this for us, probably not gonna do that, you know, they call that role for them. As far as assisting is concerned, I'm not sure what that would look like. That's something that we would have to talk about in advance with them. Generally, if they're gonna come, they do give us some advance notice, they're gonna talk about the plan, and now it's not. That's my, my experience with them. And if that happens, we'll, we'll address it on a case-by-case basis. It really depends on the circumstances.
I do know that we had ice here maybe like a month and a half ago.
Yeah.
It was a traffic stop, and they did detain the two people that were in the vehicle. They didn't, I don't know, they were detained.
And we see nothing of it, it wasn't talked about, it wasn't broadcast, it wasn't blown out of proportion like I've seen in some other cities, and some people did. I mean, we had, yet, yet come in and do what they had to. Almost nobody knew about it, almost nobody heard about it, until media found out and spread all of it was. So that's just something that I would like to see continue, and really not blowing anything out of proportion that doesn't need to be, things are taken care of, it seems like in the city quietly, and hopefully that's how we can keep it. I really do thank each and every one of you for everything that you've done through the last couple terms, for dealing with me in a couple hot topic issues. I, I know I've been very out there, but I honestly do. I wanna thank everybody and just say again how amazing the last couple meetings have been. It's really done here. Have a good night, council.
Meeting, Mayor Council, Julie Waley. I, I will say, the number one way for this city to ruin is the work that it has done. To fix the reputation of this police department would be to participate with two eighty-seven. Any participation with ICE or the National Guard would absolutely deplete all of the good PR work this city has done. And so, I, as someone who's been getting very involved with the community here in Melton Dale, I ask the complete opposite of what was just asked in front of you. Because this is a city that is having serious existential crisis because of the fear of that happening. Do not instill fear in your citizens, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thomas Dan, eighteen ninety-five, Bruce Street. I had a couple concerns, but I've been, I've asked for some earlier. It's been over a month, I've called, and it's just like, height of the wind, or what's, what's the problem with people getting quartered? Request brief information.
That goes to the clerk's office? What was the point of form?
Hold your answer. Thomas Dan. How do you spell your letter?
Can you look at it tomorrow and break out your phone? Um, you should have received it before. What was the request for?
Do I have to say it?
No, Tara will call you tomorrow, and you can talk to her.
Yeah, I see a lot of facial expressions up here.
It's fine, you don't have to.
Um, email or mail?
I brought them in, I've got Stanton who received. I've called, uh, for it, it's been over a month.
Did you get a letter asking for an exception?
No letter, no call.
Okay.
I'm sure there's one occurred too, there's other people asking as well, and they haven't received their requests too, so. Speaking of their requests as well, they, it didn't just mean that, it didn't create information.
Well, it could be turning to a problem if we're not filling our toilets as we should. Can you give the Tara, and she can reach out to you tomorrow and find out what's going on here? All right.
Uh, there's a couple other concerns right there where I live, uh, apartment complexes, it's up in Coleman and Allen. Uh, like I said, about this up the alley there is, uh, the lights, it's really boring now. It's dark at five o'clock, and I was still hit the launcher there. I flew out of the garage, and there's, it come right up, I didn't even see them. Block cast my vehicles, and I looked, so I'd like to address that again, that there's a light maybe in the alley somewhere. And there's, there's only one that sound like a lighter. And then the apartment, there's, I don't know who's in charge of... The apartments right there in Coleman, there's building lights on through porch light, they do have, but there's building lights that project over apartment. And this, they haven't worked in eight years, that's why I tell you. There's one on one building, there's two on the other building, and they, they project over tires, and they haven't worked in eight years. Chasing doors outside of my house, there's an entrance to the one in the apartment complex, if the light bulb burns out, I haven't ever replaced it myself. There's a lady going in with her child, and you can't see, and there's pitch black. So I, I don't put a light bulb in there. So there's like, at least in that entrance coming in, I mean, if there's somebody that inspects there, why, why is the light being burned? Or addressed where they should have been fixed, uh, years ago.
Greg, can you address this tomorrow? The apartment complex on Coleman and, uh, Allen.
There's two steps on the building, face of Allen Road, and the other building, or the alley and parking lot, there's a set of lights, there's double tracks out, it's a scale over here. So I'm just, you know, concerned. And then, uh, as well, at one apartment, there's a pad where the garbage is in the set, container, and somebody keeps parking, there's yellow lines saying that's not supposed to park, there's blocks, the truck will grab the dumpster. Or somebody keeps parking in there, comes every Friday, so the dumpster's having a problem trying to get in there just to get the dumpster out, and they're trying to put it back in. And that is just, it's just like, I'm sure, every time they go to set it back in, the garbage is blocking where the lines set. It's illegal to park there. And he's setting them, sticking out in the alley a couple weeks. There's, there's a lot of issues, and there's, and there's people parking in the alley as well. And I said, that's what I mentioned before last meeting, far as the light, councilman Wheeler suggested maybe somebody company or something, and that's totally a question of light. He did, he placed a toll behind my house, whether it was right down there or not, I don't know. But, you know, there's still people, you could, they could put a sign there, just be on the sign, and they talk to the deputy chief, take five minutes of his time, you know, talk to him or something, uh...
I'll have the police addresses tomorrow too, uh, if there's any, like, heavy parking in that space.
As well, and then like I said, people that fly to you there, uh, you know, you stop in twenty minutes. I have proud, probably access, and I've been a great years, I, I have applied, I have a fire hazard on the park, but I also have a lot of, um, this is weird, you're totally, you know, I have to check, you know?
That's good.
It's probably all with the contest.
All right, well, as far as the, um, the apartment complex, Greg's gonna check it tomorrow. I will get with the police department to check, um, the parking situation, and then get with Tara. Forty-three. You're welcome. Sure, go ahead.
I checked the lights over in that alley when you came in the last time, and did call DTE, I know the lights are in the alley.
Okay.
Heard nothing or seen nothing, but you did not just complain, we'll just take care of what you asked for that day.
Okay.
So I can review it again to see what's going on with the lights.
Can you reach back up to DTE and find out where we're at with that?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Name none, we're moving on. Same none, we're moving on. Alright, council members, uh, Mayor Phil Temps.
Hi, yes, first of all, I wanna wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving coming up, um, hoping to enjoy your holidays, you are grown, with your families. Um, I wanna thank, uh, D B W and the beautification committee on some, some of the decorations that you've done. They, uh, they did an excellent job, you know?
Yeah, they did.
Still doing, good job, uh, as we grow on, it's gonna be a good show, uh, coming, as it's.
Saturday.
Saturday? Saturday. Saturday, for tree lighting. Wanna, uh, invite everyone out for that tree lighting as well. Um, I got, I have to say, uh, we've, we've brought up, you know, getting on different foots and, and trying to, you know, reset buttons and, and stuff like that, but again, you know, when the council votes on something and we make a decision, it is not a scope of the mayor's duties to impede what council would have voted on. If you have a problem with whatever resolution we voted on, that's something that you take up with us beforehand. You can't impede a decision that the council has made, that is against the charter. We brought this up multiple times. Corporate council is trying to warn you multiple times. Regardless of whatever good intentions you have, you have, I mean, good or bad, it is not within the scope of your capabilities, like I said. What council has decided to do, it is against the charter. And, uh, I just hope that we can, you know, we can, you see that and, and then, uh, and, uh, make the right decision, you know, to, to sign the, the contract that we have to sign in the first place. So, that, any, uh, any, uh, concerns that you had should have been brought up to us beforehand. And regardless of how much, you know, we've had, Rocky Pass we've had, you're still the mayor. You can contact us, you can talk to us, believe. But you can't just say, okay, I'm not gonna sign, I'm gonna make a decision on it all. The council would have voted on it. That's all.
Alright, uh, Councilmember, Mayor Phil Temps.
Uh, I just wanna say happy Thanksgiving to everybody and unfortunately, this weekend, I will be working. So this is probably my first tree lighting ceremony I've missed in several years. Um, which stinks, but I like to enjoy seeing everybody out there. Uh, so I hope everybody has fun during it. Again, it's a Saturday, seven, six to eight, you know, right here outside of City Hall, so, uh, enjoy that. Um, other than that, that's all I have.
Councilman Frederick?
I have a happy Thanksgiving.
Alright, Councilwoman Chertsey.
Um, I just wanted to address two questions by, uh, a couple of the residents. The first one, an elected official having been removed for missing, I believe it's twelve meetings in a year. I do not know if it states twelve or it states half of the regular meetings. I don't know the exact wording in the charter, but it's twelve. Um, the other question was about why we spent five thousand dollars on this screen and then took it down. This council was not told about the cost of that. We were not told that it was being purchased. What we were told was that there was increase in the price of the gate. And we're told they did not have an invoice at the time and that that increase was five thousand dollars. We took them at their word and okayed the increase in the price of the gate. So, when it was found that that increase was not for the price of the gate, it was to add something additional, there, it was too late, we had already voted on it, we had already agreed to pay for it, but we did not agree for it to be put up. That's why it was removed. And other than that, I just wanna tell everybody happy Thanksgiving.
Um, I don't have an, you know, high portion tonight, so everybody have a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Now, with payment approved though?
I moved to receive and place on file the invoice and cover sheet and to authorize the payment of the invoice is totally one million, one hundred forty-four thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars and seventy-eight cents. Electronic transfer total three hundred forty thousand, four hundred six dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Any discussion? Singa, how about?
Yes. Bobowski?
Yes.
Roger?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes. Motion, Chertsey? All of you here, uh, I think I'll vote.
Happy Thanksgiving.